Good evening, and welcome to the Town of Auburn zoning board of appeals for Thursday, June 16th, 2022. We have three hearings this evening before we begin as a matter of housekeeping. This meeting, this open meeting of the Town of Auburn zoning board of appeals is being operated as a hybrid format under chapter 22 of the Act of 2022. The public can join the meeting remotely by telephone by dialing 1-646-749-3112 and access code 944-571-349, or joined by computer by visiting https://global.gotomeeting.com/join/944571349. Governor Baker signed into law chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, which extends certain statuses enacted due to COVID-19. This statute, excuse me, this statute states that public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through July 2000, excuse me, through July 15, 2022. The prior law extended remote meetings until April 1, 2022. Just as a reminder, just as a reminder that as of July 16th, when the law expires, boards, commissions, and committees may no longer hold either fully remote or hybrid remote meetings. Starting on July 16th, 2022, remote participation will no longer be supported. All supporting materials have been provided to the members of this body and are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using posted agendas. As a preliminary matter, my name is Michael Marin, acting chair of the zoning board of appeals. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons participating in the agenda this evening remotely are present and can hear me. So, members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Richard Cussie?
Affirmative.
Jay Lawrence Tacolo?
Here.
Megan Roche?
Here.
Caitlin Bush?
I'm here.
Thank you. Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Caleb Moody?
Here.
Keith Hesleton?
Present.
Please note that the vote taken in this meeting will be conducted as a roll call vote. State, excuse me, please note that the meeting will be recorded by the Auburn cable television and if in fact...
I just need to ask if anybody else is recording?
I think we're good. Yeah, no, you're right. Thank you. Excuse me. And just asking if anyone in the audience is recording this evening and not hearing any. Very good. All right. Thank you for bearing with me through that and with the print going back and forth. So, our first hearing this evening is a 6:00 PM applicant, applicant viewpoint signs and awning requesting a special permit under section 7.8 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an electronic messaging center, EMC, sign located at 123 Auburn Street, MAP 24, parcel 055. Is the applicant present? Okay. Do you have a motion to open the hearing? I'll make a motion to open. Okay. So, we'll do roll call vote. Motion has been made in second . So, Mr. Cussie?
Open.
Ms. Tacolo?
Open.
Ms. Bush?
Open.
And, uh, and Ms. Roche, excuse me.
Open.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, good evening, sir. So, if you could state your name for the record and tell us what you'd like to accomplish?
Hey, it's Joseph Buckholz. I'm with viewpoint sign and awning, and I'm here on behalf of Bay State Savings Bank to put a message center on their building at 123 Auburn Street. There are some reasons for it. Is that one, the zoning isn't allowed in this area. However, we've shown a map with a circular to show you that where we're planning on putting this message center is not facing anyone's houses. So, it really shouldn't affect residential areas. It's basically facing the busy road of Auburn Street, the off road of the highway and Vine Street where they come to the intersection. The purpose is to help the bank, you know, advertise to their customers of services and rates, et cetera. I have full color pictures of the proposed sign on the building if you'd like to see it. Bigger prints. And we're just asking for permission to put that sign up.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna go ahead and, and if there are any other comments, I'll go ahead and open it up to the board members for their questions. Ms. Tacolo?
Thank you, Mr. Marin. The present sign that exists?
Yes.
Is that being replaced with?
Yes.
Your message center?
Yes.
Okay. That's it for right now, Mr. Marin.
Thank you, Mr. Tacolo. Mr. Cussie?
I have no questions right now.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bush? Questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Roche, questions for the applicant?
No, none from me.
All right. Thank you. So, we'll go around one more time and, and see if board members have any questions and any discussion. I, sorry, I do have one question. So, this, this sign that you're sharing here, and of course both, you can't see it, but this, this sign here, this is the only sign that we're...
Yes, that, the one on the right is existing.
Yes.
The one on the left is proposed. So, that one comes down and this goes up in its place.
I did have an opportunity to view the property, and I know you had mentioned this, but this depiction, not that it threw me, but when I viewed the property, so we're not talking about any other location of a sign, of a sign.
No, that, the whole purpose of that is to show the, the 200-foot radius of where the, that was part of the code, and also to show that the angle of the sign is not going to be in any residential house, which is a big concern.
Understood. Yeah, and I, I think you well covered that. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, I don't have any further questions. Frankly, Caleb, do you have any comments?
No, I just check with the butters.
Okay, very good. Are there any butters present that would like to speak on this matter? Not seeing any in the room. Any on the phone?
No.
Oh, very good. All right. And so, just one last time, any board members have any additional comments or questions?
None.
For the applicant?
None for me.
Okay. All right. Very good. All right. Thank you, sir. So, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Second. All right. Very good. Motion made, made in second. So, Mr. Cussie, how do you vote?
Close the hearing.
To close the hearing. Yes. And Mr. Uh, Mr. Tacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Close.
Ms. Roche?
Approve.
Very good. Thank you. So, we have the applicant and his brief before us. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion to grant.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. So, motion's been made in second. So, Mr. Cussie, how do you vote?
I vote to grant.
Mr. Tacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Approve.
Ms. Roche?
Grant.
And the chair votes to grant and approve. All right. So, congratulations, sir. I would only add to my approval to grant that we would do it with standard conditions. All right. Thank you very much, and good luck to you. Okay, we'll just give a moment for the gentlemen to exit the room.
Let's see if I have any other people.
Okay, our second hearing this evening is a 6:05 PM applicant, Property Solutions is requesting a special permit under section 3.2.2.8 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build an accessory apartment at 855 Oxford Street South, MAP 80, parcel, excuse me, MAP 080, parcel 007. Is the applicant present?
Yeah.
Very good. If you could approach. If I could take a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Tacolo. Is there, Mr. Cussie, seconds? And so, Mr. Tacolo, how do you vote?
Open.
Mr. Cussie?
Open.
Ms. Bush?
Open.
And, excuse me, Ms. Roche?
Um, I will approve most of them. I have a preference if you want to.
I'm sorry. Didn't quite get that, but what I was looking for was just your vote on a motion to open the hearing.
Yeah, I approve.
All right. Very good. And the chair, the chair approves to open. All right. And thank you for bearing with us through those logistics.
Sure.
And so, good evening, sir. If you could state your name. Thank you for being here and tell us what you're looking to accomplish.
Yep. My name's Rick LeBlank from Property Solutions, and we're looking for a special permit to put an in-law apartment in the basement.
Okay. Anything additional to that?
No, pretty simple.
All right. Very good. Before I open it up to board members for their comments, there was, I want to call to, to the board members' attention, there was a communication brought forward that was circulated, and you should have it now in your packet that speaks to this hearing. And Caleb, I don't know if, before we begin, member comments, if you wanted to comment on this hearing?
I don't have any specific comments. You can read, you can read the board's comments.
All right. Very good.
Sure, I heard if you want to read them, or I can read them?
No, I, I'm sorry. I can, I can certainly read them. I'm sorry. I was just looking, I was originally looking for an attachment on the email, quite frankly, but it, it literally is just an email. Okay, very good. And so, brought forward today by the Board of Health is the following comment that was circulated to the board members. The Board of Health does not recommend an accessory apartment project without review of an existing and proposed floor plan of the entire dwelling. Any proposed addition must be in compliance with the septic design requirements. If you have any additional questions, please let me know. So on. And so, with that, I'm going to go ahead and, for consideration, open it up to board members for questions and comments. Ms. Tacolo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Initially, I have one comment and one question of our Board of, not the Board of Health, but our commissioner here. Caleb, was there a specific concern that would be addressed if you had a floor plan of the proposed addition?
Bedroom count.
Pardon?
The septic, the septic system designed for a certain number of bedrooms.
Right.
So, the Board of Health needs to determine how many bedrooms are in the existing home and how many bedrooms are being added.
Thank you. Doesn't it, um, does that take into account proposed bathrooms?
It's, it, the system, the system design is based on bedroom count.
Thank you. Comment I have, Mr. Chairman, is if we go ahead and proceed, um, we don't have that floor plan. We can't, we really, my recommendation, I guess, would be not to proceed on the application.
Can I interrupt for one second?
If you could just let him finish, sir.
It would be to not proceed on the application in accordance with the recommendation. I don't believe it would be servicing the town to hold any kind of a vote. That, that's it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Tacolo. So, I, before we move on to other board members, I will give you an opportunity to respond, sir.
Okay. Thanks. So, yeah, you do have in the packet the proposed plan. There was a couple of things that the building commissioner had asked us to do, so we had the plan redone to include those items. And also, I brought in a plan of the existing house that they had scanned. I think, uh, you might want that. My wife brought it down to you and the house plan as well. She had the whole set of plans. She had the whole roll.
Through the chair?
It was the whole house.
How many bedrooms in the existing house?
There's three bedrooms in the house now. We're adding one.
And what's its design for the system?
Uh, four.
My recommendation would be if the board was to move forward, that they condition upon approval by the Board of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Cussie. Mr. Moody, excuse me. Okay, I, I do have questions, but I'm gonna reserve them and give other board members an opportunity to jump in. Mr. Cussie?
Yeah, I agree with Caleb. Have you been in the home?
Maybe. I don't know. I haven't, not since they've applied.
The house is about 10 years old, so I don't know.
Yeah, I, I haven't been in since they submitted this application.
Yeah.
But the, the permit approval could be conditioned upon approval by the Board of Health. That way, they would either have to meet the, the floor plan would have to meet the Board of Health's approval, or they would have to upgrade the system to meet the Board of Health's approval.
Right. I mean, the system's huge, so we need to know what's, what exists, uh, system exists now. So, it was for a bedroom, four-bedroom home, the system was...
Town, Town of Auburn has a plus-one regulation, so a three-bedroom home would require a four-bedroom design for these instances where they come to add a bedroom. That way, they don't have to, but, but it would, they wouldn't be able to move forward without Board of Health's approval anyway. Conditioning the permit would, would cover everything. If, if the board decided to approve the permits.
Would require a five-bedroom design?
When they build, when they build the house, they, they, they require plus-one, so that if somebody comes in down the road to add to their home, they can, they can add it without upgrading the system. New construct, new construction requires plus-one.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Does that, is the current septic design, is that recorded anywhere?
Yes.
It is, and we have built?
They would have to, they would have to prove what, if, if we don't have it on file, if the house is 10 years old, I'm guessing it's on file, but if we didn't, they would, they would have to prove to the Board of Health what, what the system's designed for.
Okay.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to move forward without approval from Board of Health.
I believe there was an addition showing, if I heard you correctly, the layout of the addition?
There's no addition. It's a ba, it's a basement renovation.
The, the floor plan of the, um, the apartment?
Yeah, that's what you have right there.
This is the, this is the floor plan of the apartment.
This is the floor plan?
That's the proposed apartment in the basement.
In the cellar. All right.
Question, I had a bulkhead counts as a egress?
A second means of egress, plus they have an emergency escape window in the bedroom.
Right. I have no more questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cussie. Ms. Bush?
I, I don't have anything right this moment.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Roche?
I think I, you missed my comment before, but I have to recuse myself from this hearing.
Oh, excuse me. I did not catch that. All right. So, you're accusing yourself from this hearing?
I am.
Is that correct? Okay. And so, be that as it may, as just a point of, of housekeeping, given that a board member steps back, that leaves four voting board members, which would require a super majority for any hearing to pass. And so, that would certainly be at your discretion as to whether or not you'd like us to move forward with a vote with four voting board, board members. Because in order for it to be successful, it would need to achieve the affirmative with all four board members. And so, something for you to think about as we're discussing this. Okay. And with, with no other questions from other board members, I do have a few. So, sir, you had said that this is the floor plan for, for the proposed apartment?
Yes.
And this lands at 699 square feet?
Yes.
And this is one bed then?
Yes.
And what's there now?
It's just a basement, partially finished, like an exercise room, pretty much just open basement.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Any additional questions, gentlemen?
Seems to be.
Thank you, Mr. Cussie. Ms. Tacolo?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Bush, any additional questions?
Um, no.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So, before we close the public portion of the hearing, or I take recommendation to do so, if, if you would, if you had any comments or thoughts relative to moving forward with the vote this evening with, with the necessity of four voting members voting the affirmative to pass?
So, what would be the alternative?
Request a continuance.
What's that?
Nope. You could request a continuance to the next hearing.
Would there be more, more bed, board members at the next meeting? Is that what you're saying?
The expectation would be that if you moved it to the next meeting for a full complement of the board, which is five voting members, that you could wait for that.
But the person that...
But the person here is abstaining. We don't currently have an alternate.
So, wouldn't she abstain again next time?
She absolutely would. We have someone absent tonight.
But we're missing a person. Oh, there's somebody absent.
Yeah.
They can, they can watch the video of the hearing and take a vote at the next hearing. You would need everyone to vote for tonight, or you would need four and one.
Can they tell me how they're gonna vote first?
You can ask them. I don't know if they'll tell you. You can certainly ask.
I mean, we're not, we'd have to wait another month before another meeting?
That's perfect. That would, that would be your...
You're really trying to get the whole thing done. It's, it's, you know, her parents, they're actually in a hotel right now. They sold their house, so they're trying to get this done so her parents can live with them and she can help take care of them.
I did see the intent in your brief of, of the apartment, and I, you know, I am empathetic.
And we did, you know, we had the architect call to make sure that we're, everything there was done, you know, according to the town bylaws. So...
Yeah, I mean, I respect that. I do.
I guess I'll ask if I can. Is anybody gonna say no?
You can certainly ask.
Would you vote for it?
I would vote my conscience.
Okay. I, I... I think we do it. Yeah, okay.
And I'm, and I'm not, again, I'm, I'm truly not making, this is an important matter to you. I'm not trying to be cheeky in any way.
Yeah.
It's, it's an important discussion. Want to make sure that you understand that you have that right to wait for additional board members so that you're not put in a situation where you're, you're relying on a super majority.
Yeah. I really didn't think it was huge, a huge decision. So, I guess I'm gonna say yeah, let's do it.
Okay. So, you'd like to see?
Yes, let's proceed.
Very good. All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you discussing it with us. So, could I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
I'll make the motion to close.
Thank you, Mr. Cussie.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tacolo. So, Ms. Cussie, how do you vote?
Close the hearing.
And Mr. Tacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
She abstained.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I did the same thing earlier. Um, thank you. And the, and the chair votes to, excuse me, to approve the closure of the hearing.
Close.
Excuse me for that rustling. So, gentlemen, and this question we have before us, a hearing. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to grant with the conditions of the septic system, the...
Through the chair, I'd make the recommendation that the special, uh, standard conditions plus the special condition that Board of Health must approve prior to any building plan that's being issued.
Ms. Cussie, would you like to amend your motion as stated?
Yeah, I would like to grant with these conditions right here. I would just re...
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded with the conditions articulated by Mr. Moody. Ms. Cussie, how do you vote?
Grant.
Mr. Tacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Approve.
And the chair approves. And so, with those stated conditions, it will ask Mr. Moody to help us articulate in the decision with that. But it certainly is contingent upon Board of Health approval.
Why pursue that, or?
Yeah.
Okay. I just go talk to the Board of Health.
Yeah, they're in our office, so you can just call Keith tomorrow.
Yeah, and that office will work openly directly with you.
Good enough.
To look to accomplish. But the conditions of, of the approval and the special permit are such that if the Board of Health signs off, then you should be good.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
For being here. We'll just give them a moment to exit before we move to our next hearing.
Sorry, the last names is so close. I can't hear you.
Same, Roche. I was, I was doing it all evening.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
What's your preference for location? Knowing that I have to talk in the market for markets to speak for a long time.
Probably right there, and we can turn that mic toward you.
Oh, yeah, wherever you're comfortable. But that, yeah, yeah, sir, whatever you want.
I might be able to see it. Well, maybe you might turn it this way, and you might put it over there.
It's not where he sits. It's the camera for the people remotely. It's not him. It's... That's why we asked for documents, so we can put them on the screen.
If, if you like, you can just put them up on the screen and discuss on that.
Ms. Bush, Ms. Roche, so we're just going through some logistics on, they brought an easel in and some, uh, some graphics, and so they're just discussing where they should put it and placement of the room. Okay. So, let's go ahead and move on. We have a 6:10 PM applicant, Nine Saint Mark LLC, requesting, and, excuse me, requesting an aquifer special permit under section 4.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a proposed addition to an existing commercial building at Nine Saint Mark Street, MAP 058, parcel 044. The applicant is in fact present. So, I will, is there a motion open to hearing?
Motion to open.
Second. Thank you. And so, Mr. Cussie, how do you vote?
Motion open, I mean, open, yes.
Mr. Tacolo?
Open.
Ms. Bush?
Open.
Ms. Roche?
Open.
And the chair votes to open. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here. So, if you could just state your name for the record, please. I, I am gonna ask you, I, I know you're working with some graphics. If you could lean into the microphone, just so that everyone can hear you, and if you could state your name for the record and tell us what you're looking to accomplish.
Yes, thank you. For the record, Jim Burguino, CMG Engineering, representing the applicant of Nine Saint Mark Street LLC. Mr. Jim Clarkman's here. He is the applicant this evening for the property. Just to give a quick locus, so everyone understands where the project is, the site's located at Nine Saint Mark Street. You have an existing, almost 24,000 square foot light industrial building located off of Saint Mark Street, which is south side of Washington Street. It's a little just south, southwest of Pondville, Pond. The development location is within a industrial area, just short, resident, short industrial park off of Route 20. It is located within the general industrial zone. What the applicant is looking to do is to construct a, just over 11,000 square foot proposed addition to the building, 11,200 square feet to be exact, to address his current tenant's needs. This is just the zoomed-in portion of the site plan that was in your package. I just coded it up so you can see it from a little bit of a distance. Kind of a unique situation for the current use of the project. As I mentioned, we have just under 24,000 square foot of a building. We do have paved access driveways in and around and actually through the building. So, we are in the process of working with Conservation Commission as well, because we do have on the north and south sides of the site weapons. So, we had our first inland, our first Conservation Commission meeting last week, site walk over the weekend. Within a couple of weeks, we'll be in front of the planning board for our site plan review and approval. But obviously, tonight, we're here to talk about the special permit because the property will be located within the Groundwater Protection Overlay District, Zone 2. With that being said, this is the proposed addition. Obviously, there's no changes to the existing building. We're looking to add an 11,200 square foot addition. We're mimicking the site circulation of the site, allowing for delivery vehicles to pass through the building and out the side, unload their materials, and basically maintain the same operations that's there today, but a little bit of an enhancement with some additional capacities because economies taking off, and they're growing and need some additional space. One component that we did add to the plan that's not currently implemented on the site right now in these existing additions, we added a little bit better maneuvering for tractor-trailer vehicles. In addition to driving through the building, we've also provided your traditional loading docks, so those larger vehicles could come in and load traditional manners rather than driving. So those, um, larger vehicles could come in and load traditional manners rather than driving through the building. So it gives the current tenant, um, options for deliveries and also should their lease expire in a number of years, it also gives the applicant, uh, greater diversity to, you know, seek, uh, other tenants as well. Now, uh, the special permit obviously outlines anything over 15% impervious on the site needs the special permit. Existing conditions were about 38%, so existing conditions were already over that 15%, um, um, maximum allowed without a special permit. We are proposing to increase the impervious by obviously means of the destruction of the building and the paved parking areas. However, what we've done is we developed a very comprehensive and detailed drainage system that will collect clean rooftop, um, and infiltrate, infiltrate it into the, into the, um, groundwater by an underground contention system. Uh, we've also are collecting all of the, um, impervious surfaces, which where your pollutants will come from, your sands, your salts, and any drippings from vehicles and the like. We have a collection and treatment system additional, uh, to the underground system. So before it gets infiltrated, we're going to settle out the solids and the greases, treat it beyond what's required from, you know, the minimum standards of the stormwater, uh, policy. Um, so, uh, in the net charge, we're actually putting more groundwater, more rainwater back into the ground than what's existing conditions. So we're not just only mitigating the added impervious that we're, um, proposing, we're putting actually more into it. Obviously, this is going to require a further review of the site plan review process. Uh, we have, uh, initiated, um, the pair review of that, hopefully that will be coming forth within a few weeks. So, um, we believe we should be able to address those comments that come back from them. Uh, other than that, I'll, I'll keep my presentation, uh, short and kinda to the point with the special permit. Uh, our application has outlined, uh, how we meet all the standards of the special permit as well as the aquifer protection zone. We can go into detail on those if you have any particular questions, but rather than going through a lengthy read-through, um, turn it over to the, um, board for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Okay, Ms. Chacolo?
I have no further questions.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Cussing?
Yeah, um, how did you make out with conservation? Did they?
Conservation, um, it was well received, we didn't get into, uh, much dialogue with questions and comments. Uh, we had a sidewalk and it appeared that things were relatively straightforward. They, um, looked at the plans at, at the quick lens and they were good to see some of the hot buttons, like where's our snow storage, does that go to the drainage system? And all of those components have been incorporated into the cyclines. But, um, other than some of the preliminary comments, we haven't got into the nitty gritty, um, of that. Uh, we're actually meeting with them next week for a second hearing, hope to get more feedback, uh, if there is any.
And they've done deep hole tests there?
Yes, we've done deep hole tests, um, you know, through that area, we've done testing in the building area and the like. There's some areas of where along the edge of the property here, there is a sewer reason. So the town actually has a, one of the main sewer lines moving around the property. Back whenever that was installed in the late 50s or 60s, they just backfilled it, meaning organic materials. So there's some areas, you know, in the detention basin where we need to remove that, get down to natural sands. So there are natural sands there, but we've got to take a little bit of material out, particularly in the drainage basin, to make sure it does, um, beach into the ground as it would be intended in the designs. So we've, we've done probably more testing than we want to, but I, I think it was well, uh, well needed to make sure we get it right.
Good, I just, I remember that being a little mucky over there.
Yeah, it gets mucky up in the building, no problem, but where that drainage, where that sewer line goes through, it was probably a valley someday and they just followed the sewer line down the low spot and backfilled whatever they had.
And what exactly gets done in, in, with the business, is it cutting metals or?
It, it's cutting metals, they, um, basically are a, you know, cutting fabrication with cold, um, you know, corrosive, corrosive resistant materials. Uh, they do a lot of work with, I think, electric boat down in Rodden. So when they have, especially, you know, uh, U channels, they have to be assured of safety size. I believe they have a full machine shop so they could cut, fabricate to, to standard, to spec, things of that nature and get it, and get it, you know. It's, it's really cutting it down, shaping.
So coolant, so you use a lot of coolant?
Yes, they, they would have coolant, um, but we do have, um, you know, probably a lot of oil coolant, things of that nature that we're cutting. Uh, so they do have that contained inside the building. Uh, anything dripping on the floor, the floor is equipped with, uh, some drains because there are vehicles, trust me, going through the site, that's collected and we have, um, existing, uh, an empty C-trap oil grid separator that's required by the plumbing code. We're gonna continue to maintain that on the property. Um, we're actually gonna relocate it and potentially install a new one, depending on the integrity of it. But, um, we're gonna be addressing that as well. Uh, I think one of the preliminary comments through the site plan review was just to make sure that, um, they, the property is current with the industrial discharge requirements of the treatment plants, the water, um, wastewater treatment plants. So what we're gonna be doing is once everything, if we are successful, you know, permitting the title of the town, we'll work with those guys for final sewer connection permits and things of that nature.
And you're gonna separate the system that's gonna have separation, uh, so you're gonna separate the oils and?
Yes, yes, exactly.
So these have to be maintained also?
Yes, and, um, as part of the, uh, stormwater system designs that we have, um, we've developed an operation in this plan called, uh, you know, routine inspections and then obviously routine and, you know, minimum requirements for, uh, cleaning of them, you know. If you have such an amount of sedimental oil that's noted in inspection, it's gotta get pumped out. Or if it's okay, then it goes to the next inspection, but at a minimum, you have to do it once a year.
Yeah, just, we have a pond there and aquifer, it's a little.
Right.
A little sketchy for me to, as long as, uh, yeah, we need to make sure that we do it right and, uh, and maintain it. Those would be my concerns. No more questions for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Cussing. Ms. Roche?
Um, not really, I guess I just wanna reiterate on the record, you don't anticipate, uh, the increase in any total traffic to and from the area. You're just expecting on the business that you are expecting.
And so if I could, uh, Ms. Roche, please correct me, it came through a little bit, a little bit choppy, but I, I believe that your question was, um, if there's any anticipated increase in traffic, is that correct?
Correct, especially larger, bigger vehicle.
Okay.
Seems like they're just continuing.
Uh, thank you, thank you for repeating. So the question, uh, is, um, is, is do you anticipate, um, an increase in, in traffic flow? Um, and is there also any anticipation of, um, larger vehicles, different vehicles, a different traffic pattern or size than you're experiencing now?
No, we'll start off with the different size vehicles. Um, with the current use, we're not anticipating, right now they're coming in and, um, you know, flatbed tractor trailer trucks. We're gonna maintain the same type of characteristics of what's gonna be delivering. The, the operations of the proposal of the current business is not going to change. What they're looking for is added space so they could stage setup and the like. Um, we're not anticipating, uh, any substantial increase in traffic. Um, we're probably only anticipating maybe one or two new employees, um, associated with this. Um, and delivery vehicle, delivery would be about the same, maybe additional one or two vehicles during the entire. So, um, but it's more for having the inventory, you know, capability in the areas to fabricate within the existing facility that they're trying to accomplish. Uh, not necessarily adding a wing of 20 new employees, we're not looking for that. We're just looking for areas to stage, prepare, have the stock available, uh, to fulfill the orders, you know, in a timely manner.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bush, did you, uh, excuse me, uh, Ms. Roche, I apologize, um, did you, were you able to get that answer?
Yep, I got it, and no further questions for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and Ms. Bush, um, did you have questions?
Uh, no questions for me.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, before I, I, uh, just confirm if board members have any, any additional questions. Um, so one, uh, one you did already answer, so that there's no substantive change, this has added space to a current operation.
Yes, and you know, obviously a little bit of increase in delivery here or there, a week, one or two employees were maybe anticipated. But it, it's not a substantial change that's gonna change our operation.
But same, same core operation, no new business, you're not gonna all of a sudden start fixing cars in there?
Right, exactly, there's no change in use.
Understood, and then, um, I just had a question, just based on the size and viewing the property, looked like it was going to land in an area that was already relatively paved, or at least a large portion of it.
Yes.
Was gonna be paved, so my estimate, I mean, do, do you have numbers on, um, what the switch is going to be as far as increase or decrease in impervious surface?
22,244 square feet, half an acre of new impervious area.
Of new?
Of new impervious.
Alright, but, but again, your comments earlier were noted on, on how you're gonna remediate.
Correct, we're, we're, we're mediating that by incorporating collection, conveyance, treatment, and infiltration recharge above and beyond what's necessary just for the addition.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions from the board members?
I have, what's that? Is this a one shift operation?
I know they were not working Saturday morning, the comm, comm had me out there. They're not working on the Saturdays.
I'm just wondering, I'd like to know if there's any bodies that might be somewhere in the ground, I don't think.
So, you know, from that standpoint, impacts the neighbors, so there, there's no change in operation, there's no change.
Yeah.
In, you know, clearing of vegetation around, we're working within our developed area. So, you know, noise, sound, traffic, things of that nature are all anticipated to be the same as it currently exists today. So, you know, other than potential construction impacts during that time, we don't expect any long-term additional impacts, um, from this development.
Okay, alright, very good, um, and I'll just go once more, um, Ms. Bush, any additional questions or comments?
No, nothing additional, thanks.
Thank you, and, um, and, and Ms. Roche, any additional questions or comments?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, okay, um, with, with no other questions, um, comments from the board, um, I will, and thank you for reminding me, um, I will ask if there are any butters, not seeing any, um, participating in the room here, no butters online? Okay, so no additional participants to engage. Um, alright, well with that, I'll take a, a motion, uh, one to the applicant, no additional comments?
No comments further?
Alright, very good, thank you. Um, so I'll take a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public.
Thank you, Mr. Cussing.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Chacolo, uh, so, Ms. Cussing, how do you vote?
Close the hearing.
Mr. Chacolo?
Close.
Ms. Bush? Excuse me, Ms. Bush?
Approve.
Ms. Roche?
Close.
And the chair votes to close the public portion of the hearing, okay, so is there a motion, uh, for the six, 10 P M applicant?
I'll make a motion to grant with the, uh, normal condition.
For the chair, if I could, just like to modify, uh, make a suggestion on aquifer, the, with, that you add the standard aquifer special permit conditions and also the special condition that the construction follow the plan as approved by the Auburn Planning Board, as it's all going out to peer review under the site plan, and I'm gonna just provide these special standard conditions.
Okay, I was just making a, a quick note, so, Ms. Cussing, would you, would you like to amend your motion with those conditions?
Yes.
Okay, as stated, standard conditions as stated, the standard aquifer conditions, and then, uh, to follow the approved Auburn, uh, planning board.
And I will, I will second with the additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo, was there additional comment, Mr. Moody?
No.
Okay, thank you, so motion made and seconded, so, Ms. Cussing, how do you vote?
Grant.
And Ms. Chacolo?
Grant.
Ms. Bush?
Grant.
Ms. Roche?
Grant.
Alright, and the chair votes to grant as well, um, with the conditions that have been stated, a standard aquifer condition and, um, that in fact, the special permit follow the, um, the approval by the Auburn Planning Board. Uh, so congratulations, gentlemen, thanks for being here, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Just one comment for the applicant before they leave, just check in with DPW about a land disturbance permit sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, so as, um, as our final applicant clears the room, I note that there is other business, um, but I'm going to, um, defer to Mr. Hesleton, uh, just to confirm whether or not, does this need to be addressed and stated? Or, um, did we cover this in the opening as I booked? Okay. Thank you very much for doing that, okay, so essentially, for board members, I mean, this, this will be our final opportunity for a remote participation meeting. Um, and that going forward, um, they will all be live here in the town hall. Okay, thank you for that, and, yeah, it probably warranted noting with me switching back from borrowed glasses to my own eyes and butchering the opening, that, um, I, I thank you for the reminder here. Okay, our next meeting is July 21st, 2022, hard to believe it's already July, um, around the corner. Um, no additional comments or business, and so with that, I'll take a motion, uh, to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Cussing, made and seconded. Uh, Ms. Cussing, how do you vote?
Adjourn.
Mr. Chacolo?
Adjourn.
Ms. Bush?
Adjourn.
Ms. Roche?
Adjourn.
And the chair joins to adjourn, thank you very much and good evening.